We'll call tonight's virtual meeting to order, the Lebanon Planning Commission Meeting, April 3rd, 2020. We will not have a flag salute tonight, so we're gonna go right to our call.
Okay. Chairman Brockin? Chairman Salvage?
Here.
And Commissioner Brockin?
Here. Chairman Salvage.
Commissioner Port? Vice Chairman Robertson?
Here.
Commissioner Golka? Commissioner McLean?
Yep.
Commissioner Prenovo?
Here.
And I believe I've gotten everybody.
All right, thank you. Minutes were, this is a review of February 19th minutes from 2020. Is there any additions, corrections, revisions to those meeting minutes? All right, I've seen none, so those minutes stand as submitted. Before we begin the public hearing, first of all, does it sound like I'm yelling, or is this about the right volume?
Sounds good.
All right, I feel like I'm yelling. I'm gonna go over basically why we're meeting virtually, go on the record, and then how this process is gonna go. So, in response to the coronavirus pandemic, for the protection of the public's health and the health of staff and commissioners, the city has initiated the process of conducting virtual public meetings. The city originally canceled all non-essential public meetings in response to that pandemic. However, per the Oregon State Statute, land use applications must be processed through all required hearings within 120 days if the application being deemed complete. As this state statute has not been suspended by the governor or state legislature, the city is required to hold a public hearing in order to maintain compliance with the state requirements. So to ensure, we have a robust public input process, the city has made the planning commission agenda available for a full 20 days prior to the hearing, to allow the public to review the plans and reports, and provide written and verbal comment at the hearing. In addition, this public hearing process will occur in three phases. So tonight, tonight we will hear the staff report, the application will have a presentation, and the planning commission will get to deliberate and ask questions of the staff and the applicant. Once this is complete, the public record will be kept open, and the public hearing will be continued to a date certain of Thursday, May 7th, 2020, at 6:00 p.m. During the time period between this meeting and 5:00 p.m. on May 5th, 2020, the city will be accepting both written and verbal comment on the public hearing items.
Should be on.
For verbal comment, a phone number has been provided in the public notice, agenda packet, and can be viewed on the screen. After the deadline, city staff will compile all the received public comment and deliver to the planning commission applicants, and make available on the city's website, if possible, all the received public comments. Next step will be the public hearing continuing on May 7th at 6:00 p.m. For this portion of the public hearing, staff will summarize the public comments received, the applicant will be able to respond to the comments, the planning commission will ask any further questions. On conclusion, the comments and questions to the applicant, the public hearing will be closed, the planning commission will deliberate, and either render a decision or postpone the hearing to a date certain for further evaluation. This process, although the planning commission meeting will provide the public with an opportunity to participate and engage in the public hearing process. So for tonight, it's gonna be obviously different because we're separated, but we'll introduce the public hearing item on the agenda, we have two on tonight's agenda, so introduce the public hearing, introduce it. City Attorney, is the city attorney present?
Yes.
Okay. He'll go over the revised meeting procedures if he deems it necessary, and then we will ask if there's any conflict of interest or bias. Staff will give a presentation, planning commissioners will, can ask staff questions, the applicant will then be introduced and able to make any comments. The planning commission can then ask further questions of the applicant. And once the applicant has spoken, all questions are asked answered, we will move to continue the hearing for a date certain of May 7th at 6:00 p.m., and leave the record open to receive public comment until 5:00 p.m. on May 5th. We'll need a second and then a vote on that, and we'll move on to the next hearing item. At the conclusion of both hearings, I'm gonna make sure, I'll say this again, but we want to remind the public, they have opportunities to provide comment, and this contact will be displayed on the screen, we'll make it available on the city website as well, and then we will close the meeting. So, having said all that, are there any questions on how tonight's meeting and then the next two phases of this are gonna go? All right. That means we're gonna move on to our first public hearing tonight. It's planning file AR-20-03, VAR-20-01. And before we open that hearing, I'll turn it over to the city attorney to make any comments about the process that I have already made.
All right, thank you. I think the majority of the provisions have already been changed as part of, essentially as part of this virtual meeting. I do want to point out, however, that the standards and the criteria remain the same with, as it relates to the planning commission's role and the decision that they're gonna make. As it relates to the evidence, I want to remind everybody that all evidence must be directed towards the criteria that is described in the staff report and in the comprehensive plan or relevant land use regulation. We'll note that, again, failure to raise an issue, including constitutional issues, and how those issues relate to the proposed conditions of approval, if any, accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the commission and the parties an opportunity to respond, would still preclude any appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeal. With that, again, we also need to make sure that we keep a proper record of any comments, submissions, and evidence. Mr. Chairman, with that, you can ask any conflict of interest or bias.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. And with that, is there any expert contact with all commissioners among the commissioners? All right, I take that as no. So I will now turn it over to Mrs. Hart.
Thank you, Chairman. If I could ask, before I get started, if we can have everybody mute their mics, so that we don't have as much feedback, would be great. So, good evening. Before you tonight, is a development proposal for an affordable housing project. The applications that are under consideration include an administrative review and a variance that's at a Class II level. So the subject property is generally located on the north side of the intersection of Airport and Stolt Hill Road. The total site area was previously 8.19 acres, with a frontage on Airport and Strawberry Lane. Through an application for a minor land use petition in 2019, the previous, the property was divided into three parcels, with the subject parcel totaling 2.73 acres currently. The new subject parcel is located approximately 600 feet north of Airport Road and approximately 150 feet east of Strawberry Lane, and Strawberry Lane is a county designated road. The property is zoned residential mixed density, and the surrounding properties to the north is a vacant parcel, also zoned residential mixed density. To the south is a legal non-conforming grocery store and a single-family residential dwelling, which are located within the county, and they have a comprehensive plan designation of residential mixed use. And then to the east, across Burkhardt Creek, and to the west, are single-family dwellings located within the county again, and also maintaining a designation of residential mixed density. So for the development, the applicant is proposing a 48-unit affordable housing complex. As indicated on the site plan and shown on the screen, there would be a total of four apartment buildings, and a large community building is also proposed at the front of the property. For density, the minimum lot size for a multifamily use in the RM zone is 9,000 square feet. And for the unit size and the count of the units, the development code requires a total of 85,050 square feet, or 1.9 acres, to develop the amount of units that are proposed. And since the subject site is 2.37 acres, obviously this exceeds the minimum, and therefore it's compliant with the density standards. For setbacks, the development code requires a minimum 10-foot front setback, 5-foot side setbacks, and a 20-foot rear setback. Again, as shown on the site plan, the project meets or exceeds these requirements. And for the east side setback, the property runs along Burkhardt Creek. There is a 5-foot setback proposed to the fence line that would be provided, and then it's, the fence line would be approximately 5 feet from the top bank, and approximately 20 feet from the center line of the creek. There was a wetland delineation completed for Burkhardt Creek along the property, and the project would be developed in concurrence with that wetland delineation, and DSL has concurred with the accuracy of that delineation, to ensure that the development meets the requirements for those separations. In terms of open space, there, it's required in the development code that at least 25% of the development area be designated for open space, with a minimum usable open space requirement of 25, or 25% of the total area of the required open space. And there's also a designation of a children's play area with play equipment. There are credits to reduce the percentage of the open space requirements, when a development recreation area includes something like a community room, which they have provided. The site area is 93,364 square feet, which requires a minimum of 23,341 square feet of open space to be provided, inclusive of the common open space requirement. As indicated on the site plan, there is 16,689 square feet of common open space area, which is included towards the front of the property, and on the site plan, you can see that that's in the darker hash mark area. And then there's also the 3,000-square-foot community room, and in addition to all of that, there is 25,652 square feet of additional open space area throughout the development, and therefore it also exceeds the requirements of the code. For parking, a total of 108 spaces would be required at, if you were doing the calculation, at 2.25 spaces per unit. With the excess bicycle parking that is being provided on-site, they do get a credit for that, and so technically, if utilizing the 2.25 spaces per unit, 105 spaces would be required for the development code. The project is identified and would be conditioned as such to be an affordable housing project, where all of the units would be designated as affordable, with incomes between 30% of the area median income to a maximum of 60% of the area median income. And based off of the designation of the entire site being affordable, the applicant is requesting a reduction in the standard parking requirement, which is 2.25 spaces per unit, to a 1.5 space per unit standard. And this would provide a total of 74 parking spaces on-site, which would account as a 30% reduction in the parking requirement. For affordable housing projects, there is a correlation that demonstrates households with lower area median income result in fewer vehicles per household. In the applicant's narrative, a number of studies and resources have been provided, which demonstrate a lower vehicle per household standard, when associated with an affordable housing development. And based off of the studies provided, the applicant contends that the 1.5 spaces per unit would provide sufficient parking to accommodate the residents and the guests. In addition, under the Oregon Affordable Housing Pilot Project State Program, the city of Bend adopted an affordable housing parking requirement of 1.5 spaces per unit. The applicant's proposal is equivalent to an adopted standard of a city in Oregon, which provides a consistent application for a parking standard for an affordable project. In addition, there would be a bus stop provided at the entrance to the property, which would provide for an opportunity to use public transit as an alternative to the personal vehicle. So moving on, in terms of the site access and transportation improvements, the site is located approximately 600 feet north of Airport Road, as identified previously. As part of the development, the applicant would build a new public street to full city standard and width, which would include sidewalks, landscaping, and curb and gutter. And it would provide access to Airport Road, but then terminate in a cul-de-sac at the southwest corner of the subject development. Regular vehicle traffic would not connect to Strawberry Lane, it would only be through that cul-de-sac and then back down to Airport Road. However, there would be, to meet fire access requirements, a 20-foot emergency access road to Strawberry Lane, and it would be restricted to emergency vehicle access only. For the intersection of Airport and Stolt Hill, the applicant has aligned the new public street segment with the existing intersection. The engineering department has reviewed the alignment, and it has determined it to be appropriate for the existing configuration. And according to the city's adopted transportation system plan, Airport Road will need to be signalized within the general vicinity of Stolt Hill. And as part of the project, a traffic impact analysis was completed by DKS Engineering, and it was also conferred and concurred, excuse me, with the city's contract traffic analysis consultant. The TIA indicated that based on the current and projected traffic impacts of the project, a signal is not immediately warranted. However, it is anticipated that a signal would become appropriate based off of traffic increases as early as 2022. Based off of the adopted TST, engineering staff's understanding of the existing street network, and the expansion of the intersection as proposed by this development, is anticipated that the signalization of Airport Road would likely occur at Stolt Hill. And as such, the project has been designed and conditioned to contribute to the development of that signal at that intersection. And then in addition, for the expansion of the Lebanon Trail system, if the development is approved, the developer would be required to install a multi-use path along the creek bed. However, the construction of the path would be deferred until such time as the properties to the south of the subject site are developed. So, with that, after any questions that the planning commission has for me, the applicant will speak on the application. At the conclusion of the applicant's comments and any further questions by the planning commission, the recommended action tonight is to continue the hearing to the date certain of May 7th, and keep the public record open for public comments until May 5th at 5:00 p.m. And for the public's information on how to comment, it will be included, it's included on the screen here, and the information will also be, was also included in the public notice, and is posted on the city's website. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. And as a reminder, if you do have any questions, please remember to turn on your mics. And I'm also going to stop the sharing of the screen, so that we can all see each other.
Kelly, I have a question. You mentioned the city of, in the, in the adjustments of 1.5 parking spaces per unit. What, I missed what that was in regard to, was that a specific development, or was that a citywide change in their code?
For the city of Bend, it was a citywide change in the code. It is as part of their current development code, that if you are building an affordable housing project, they identified parking standard is 1.5.
Okay, thank you.
Hey Kelly, I got a kind of a long-winded one, and I'll try to do it quickly. Okay, so on the outside, I work for Oregon Housing and Community Services for the state of Oregon, so I'm a production analyst for affordable housing. And when I see a affordable housing, I love to see that, which is, this is gonna be great.
Hey Samuel, Samuel?
Yeah.
Can you stop for a second? Somebody else has their mic on, and it's making it to where it's really hard to hear you.
Okay.
So if everyone can mute their mics.
Okay, so, so one thing I do is I go over appraisals, and look at contract costs and expenses and use of funds. Another thing in appraisals is called, is parking requirements. So when I read over this, I saw that they did use a lot of studies, like Kelly mentioned, but if you look at those links, most of those studies are 10 years old. They're over 10 years old. Also, I also read the, the review, and what they're doing is, they're, they're wanting to save 200,000 in costs, okay? And, and they also use studies saying that affordable housing shows less cars, thus they should be able to do it, but this is the first time I've ever seen someone request lower parking, because they provided studies 10 years old and a pilot program. That's not even a fact, it's a pilot program. So I, I, I thought that I would see that there would be a reduction in parking, because they would build a pool, or more community space, or, you know, something to benefit tenants. But what I saw was, is, hey, we're looking to save 200,000 in costs. And so I can see from, you know, 10-year-old studies, how they could say, well, it's affordable housing, they don't need this much parking. But I don't think the studies they provided, with as much old they are, are accounting for visitors or people who stay longer than four days a week. So if you actually looked at what they provided, it's, for me, on my nine-to-five job, I've never seen someone request a reduction in parking to say, well, affordable housing shows less people having cars. But there's a lot of people in affordable housing who have visitors who live in those residences who are not on leases, which isn't the right thing to do, but if it's only to save 200,000 in costs, and it's not really to benefit the residents, I, I don't, I don't really see, I'd like to hear maybe Kelly or someone else expand on, outside of saving 200,000, and saying, hey, well, you know, affordable housing is showing less, it's really not, based on the studies they've shown. And one more thing I wanted to mention, let's say we, they did, we did agree on this variance, okay? The development code, 16.14.10, is the development code that talks about off-street parking that we have. And it says the parking requirements are intended to provide sufficient parking in close proximity to various uses of residence, customers, employees, or visitors to maintain traffic, carrying capacity for nearby streets. That's in our development code. So let's say we do reduce the parking, so these guys can save 200K. You know, eventually, it might violate another portion of our, our street parking development code. So if there's another reasoning I missed, besides them saving 200K without the benefits of the resident, using old, you know, you know, studies, and using a pilot program, which isn't even really truly in effect, it's a pilot, someone let me know if they found something different besides saving 200K. That's all I found.
So I'll comment on a few of those. I think most of your comments is ultimately going to be discussed and answered through the applicant. The studies may be 10 years old, but that doesn't negate the validity of a study. We could ask the developer to provide more up-to-date study, but in my professional experience as a planner, there is a correlation where, when you have an affordable housing, there is usually a less parking demand associated with it, because there is a correlation of less vehicles when you have a affordable housing development, that is a managed affordable housing development per affordability covenants and per requirements of HUD and that kind of thing. Is it perfect? No. But generally, there is that correlation, that there is a lesser parking demand. It is a pilot program that the state established, but that doesn't negate the fact that it is a code inclusion and a code requirement within the city of Bend, that they've established that as an appropriate parking standard for an affordable project. You know, I am new to Oregon, and so I can't state to whether or not the rest of Oregon utilizes a similar parking standard or not. The city of Bend was the one that, that I was able to research and identify. In other states, 1.5 parking spaces or less is actually associated with affordable housing projects, and so there is a correlation. Now, if you don't feel that there's been appropriate data provided by the applicant, that can be a requirement of the applicant to provide to further identify the basis as to how there's that correlation. As to the intention, the parking demand and the parking in exchange for a public benefit like a pool, it would be a difficult justification for a reduction in a parking demand, because the reduction in the parking demand should be associated to, there's a direct reduction in the anticipated number of cars that are gonna be associated to the site. And by, and then by approving the variance, you are identifying that this project, because of the metrics that are identified, it still meets the code requirements of providing sufficient parking on-site for the uses. You're identifying that it just doesn't need as much as the current standard allows for, or requires the minimum. And so even if you approve the variance, you're not all of a sudden saying you're no longer in compliance with these other sections of the code.
Okay, let me just, just say one more thing here. So, to most people, if you just say, you know, affordable housing, right? So, we're looking at Lynn County, because it's in Lebanon. So let's just say the median income in Lynn County is 70,000, okay? So when you say 60% of that income, you can basically say anyone working in Lynn County now, and living in this residence, makes 60% of 70,000, which is now 42,000. So guys, when we hear about affordable housing, we're thinking about people who make a little bit less money. So, again, let's just say the median income in Lynn County is 70,000. If we're allowing residents to, to live there at 60% income, that means they can make up to 42,000, okay? That, that's, that's not a significant less, this is, and they are allowing, you know, 30% incomes there too, but they're allowing people up to 42,000. Sure, somebody making $42,000 a year, obviously makes less than somebody making 70, and it would show that, yeah, they probably won't have a car. But what I'm saying is, is Kelly, I agree that, yeah, putting a pool might not be a great benefit. What I just saw in the, outside of the 10-year-old studies in which they provided, all I'm saying is, is all I saw was, we're reducing the parking requirement, because they want to save 200K. That's it. So I just thought that the benefit of that space would be used for something more than, hey, we're saving 200,000, and there's a correlation, because somebody makes 42,000 versus 70,000. So, that, that's all I'm saying is, is, I'll end it at that, but I agree with you, Kelly, that there might be a correlation, but 42,000 is still a lot outside of 70. So when we say affordable housing, it's, you know, it's, I, I just want to make sure that there's gonna be adequate parking, not to future violate the off-street parking that we have in the development code. So if we could, and also to see if they're using that space, that, that, not just to save 200K, what are they using the extra space for? That, that's, that's all I'm saying. And I, I agree that the variance might be needed, and hey, we, but that's all I'm saying. It's, it seems like to reduce simply for 200K, and they're not explaining what that extra space is being used for, I, it's, it's not a slam dunk for me right now. it's not a slam dunk for me right now.
Kelly, what are the options for overflow parking, like street parking? I don't know if that new section of Stolt Hill, is that going to have parking on it or will be just a bike lane and shoulder?
No, so for Stolt Hill extension that is being provided, there will be on-street parking provided for that as well. Per the development code, the on-street parking cannot be counted towards the parking requirement as meeting requirement, but that is a condition that will be there to provide overflow parking. Overall, the development is located in this pocket that's not easily accessible to any other road that has on-street parking until you get to Ninth Street. And by that point in time, you're walking well over a quarter of a mile to get to any of that aspect, if not more. By the time you walk down the 600 feet of the new expansion and then you cross over on Airport to Ninth, basically, there's no other area for them to park than within the development itself. And so it is at the developer's self-interest to build a project that is going to have sufficient parking for the development itself because there's no other place for them to park. There is potential other developments along Stolt Hill Road, the expansion. There's nothing that's been submitted or anything like that yet, but if there's more development along that road, you can't count on that extended street portion for the parking availability. The applicants provided studies, the applicants provided a site plan that shows the layout of how everything is designed to show you how the property is proposed to be used and in correlation with the parking. So aside from the studies, it is up to the planning commission to determine whether or not they feel those are valid. It's up to the planning commission to feel whether or not there is an appropriate correlation for a reduction of parking associated with affordable housing. And it will be an affordable covenant associated with the properties. They're not going to be able to build this as affordable housing and then next year change it over to market rate, which would have a higher parking demand. So it will be restricted to affordable housing. And then it's up to the planning commission to determine whether or not the similar parking standard provided by another city in the area, generalized area, is sufficient correlation and corroboration to identify that that's an appropriate reduction. Other than that, it would be, what additional information would you like to see from the applicant to help you make the determination if it's appropriate?
Hey Kelly, when you were mentioning the signalization of the intersection on Airport, you were glitching out a lot, at least for me, on my end, it was probably me. But could you just speak one more, once more on that? Are they, did you say that they're going to be pitching in on that down the road? Or what's going on with that again?
Yeah, so as part of the extension of Stolt Hill, it's now turning from a three-legged intersection to a four-legged intersection. It will be designed to be signalized and the developer will be contributing 25% of the signalization cost to put in the signal at that intersection.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to mention one more thing here.
Samuel, your microphone went off.
Hey, and you can see that the city of Lebanon is growing. So with the city of Lebanon growing, in combination with their older studies, just for me, I would like to see if there's anything that we could, maybe a more recent study, maybe for the county, maybe a more recent study for the city of Lebanon or the county, whichever you want to do. Because when you look at our growing population and you use 10-year-old data, maybe I'm missing something as far as reducing the parking for the residents. Because when you look at affordable housing, you don't go in and say, we're reducing the parking because it's shown that you have less cars. If you're not telling us what you're using that extra land for, other than saving money, it's just not something I'm used to seeing. And I know this is the commission and, but Kelly, is there any way that we can be told what that extra space is going to be used for? If you're going to reduce the parking, then what's that space going to be used for?
Sure, so the site plan shows what that space is being used for. So the site plan shows the layout of the parking, the layout of the proposed apartment buildings. That land is being used to provide a larger buffer on the side setbacks. That's requiring a 20-foot, a five-foot setback, they're providing a 20-foot setback to provide separation from the properties. They're providing a large area for the community building. They're providing for a large area for open space. There's storm detention. And then there's the general walking areas and the setback areas. So the site plan itself shows what they're using the land for and how the land is laid out. Ultimately, if you look at the site plan and if you look at the code requirements for this affordable housing development, if you were to require the 2.25 parking spaces, it would result ultimately in a reduction in the number of units, which is at the discretion of the planning commission, but it would impact the viability of the project based off of the number of units. And again, the applicant probably speak more fluently on that than I could.
Kelly, I have one last question. Could you, you mentioned the mixed-use path that runs along the creek. There's a caveat to that that I didn't quite hear when you were saying. Could you go over that one more time?
Yeah, so since the property is situated so far north into the Stolt Hill expansion, they're only required to build the mixed-use paths along their property line. So the length of their property line, which is kind of the top of the cul-de-sac to the northern end of their property. And so if we were to make them build it now, you're building a trail to nowhere that's connected to nothing. And so the trail would be deferred construction until such time as the properties to the south are developed.
Okay, thank you.
You know, if I could take a second to just talk about some parking and...
James, really, really quick, sorry to interrupt, but just to maintain the procedures appropriately, the chairman hasn't opened up the application yet.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, before we get to the applicant, is there any more questions for staff amongst the planning commission?
I have a couple of questions, just, I'd like to inject some common sense here. Samuel's pretty correct on a lot of this stuff that he's talking about. That I'm looking at a 48-unit complex with 72 parking spaces. That means that some people are going to get one and some people are going to get two, but you just don't get 1.5 parking spaces per unit. Now, if there's a mix of one, two, and three bedrooms, two- and three-bedroom homes usually have more than one person living in it and you're going to have, you know, a couple cars, you know, some mom and dad and a high school kid. It's possibly have three vehicles there. So 72 spaces sounds like a small amount for 48 living units. And Mr. Lutz gets a chance, I'd like for him to bring that up about how many bedrooms there are and who gets a parking space and who doesn't. That's it.
And to, I won't go into what, everything I said is, again, looking at 16.14.010 and our development code is off-street parking. So if you can also talk about how your, the future off-street parking and what's already in our development code for you to intend to provide sufficient parking in close proximity to various streets for residents, visitors, customers, employees to maintain traffic capacity to nearby streets. If what you're doing is doing that, if you can just explain that, I'm all for it. Thanks.
I again think that at this point, the applicant would speak the best on this. Really quickly, just for all the planning commissioners evaluation, on page two of the staff report, there is a breakdown of the number of unit counts. There would be six studios, 18 one-bedrooms, 18 two-bedrooms, and six three-bedrooms proposed.
All right, any more questions for staff? Okay.
I'm sorry, Jeremy, I have one. Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I'm just making sure I'm reading this right. So according to the report, over half are going to be one-bedrooms or studios, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right, that's the only question I have.
Okay, then with that, I'll open up for the applicant to comment.
All right, yeah, thank you. Thank you for setting up this meeting. We really appreciate the effort that it's taken to get to a virtual meeting like this. I do appreciate the concern on parking and the folks that'll be there. Again, there's, more than half of the units on the complex will be studio or one-bedroom. We're excited for the location of the project. We're excited to put in a bus stop. We're excited to be near the Lebanon Trail, giving very close access to town. You know, literally a block, block and a half, couple of blocks from the high school. We, I think we'll have at least 25 to 30 parking spaces along the roadside that, you know, as we push in the road and meet all city standards, you know, you'll have a significant amount of parking on the street as well. It flows good, the site flows good. I don't think the saving the 200K was really a big factor for that. It's more space. As we move into the future, I feel that we have families with fewer cars and people that commute together quite a bit often. You know, it's not like everybody in the family has a car like it used to be, really. I mean, we find our students and our veterans all trying to commute together, you know, catching rides with one another into town and back. You know, so we really want to kind of grasp the, you know, less emissions, less cars. You know, we, you know, for 2.25 parking spaces per unit seems to be quite a bit, especially if you have that, you know, again, 50% of one-bedroom or less on our end. But, you know, having the more open space and the better access to town, really, we want to minimize having just extra parking spots and really promote, you know, fewer cars and fewer trips to town via car. So the location of the project really lends itself well to easy access to town. Again, we'll be installing a bus stop. We really, it will have, we'll have dial-a-bus, we'll have multiple different bus rides and community rides. The demographic of the people that we're shooting for here, quite a bit of elderly folks, you know, you know, all of our, most of our lower units will be ADA. You know, and all of them will have a higher number of ADA units on our lower floors and all of our lower floor units will be adaptable, ADA adaptable. Again, for our demographic, for folks on the lower floors are folks on social security, veterans on social security that quite a few either don't have cars or certainly won't have more than, more than one car. So just the justification for the 1.5 parking spots per unit really is, it didn't start out to have anything, or it really didn't have anything to saving the 200K. We had to give a roundabout number for parking. Ultimately, our budget for site work, 200K was an estimate off a program that we came up with and in fact would be far less savings than the 200K. But ultimately, again, you know, this day and age, we have families with less cars and smaller cars. It's just the nature of where we're going. And again, the demographic of the folks that we're shooting for, elderly folks on the first floors and, you know, even veteran students that want to ride their bikes. We'll have an excess amount of bicycle parking. Most units will have their own storage rooms with bike hooks in them. We'll have an immense amount of covered bicycle parking spots. And again, really trying to promote the fewer cars. So I know I probably didn't answer all of your questions, Samuel, but I do appreciate that concern. It's an absolutely legitimate concern. We feel that, again, that we're providing another road. We're helping provide a better intersection to make that, Stolt Hill is been a nemesis in town here for many, many years. And to finally be able to help put a signal on that and the safety that that brings, you know, is really, it's a needed thing for the community. That's been a really busy, busy road for a lot of years. So I don't know that I answered all your questions, Samuel, but I do appreciate them.
Do you have anything to add on that, Daniel, on your end?
Yeah, sure. So I'm Daniel Bullock, I'm with CASA of Oregon. We're a nonprofit development consultant based in Sherwood. We work throughout the state, been operating for about 30 years, working in affordable housing. Got started in farm worker, but now kind of do affordable housing of all types. To specifically address some of the questions, so the issue of cost savings, my understanding of the way the code is written for the variants, I, my understanding was that it was based on kind of need and space use. To address the issue of cost, though, the project is going to have a pretty serious set of allowances and expected add-backs so that any cost savings that comes to the project will go towards fully outfitting the community building with additional amenities that'll support resident services. So equipment, workout equipment and physical therapy equipment for the gym space, the workout room, cabinet build-out and equipment for medical checkups and dental exams that can happen onsite, those sorts of, those sorts of pieces. And we can provide that list that would kind of just show, it's generally for the project. It's not specifically addressing where the cost savings directly related to the parking reduction will be. But sort of any savings left on the project as it moves through construction will first get put into providing those amenities that we've identified that will most support resident success. The, on the question of rents, the median income for Lynn County, the last HUD designated median income is 49,005, just to put kind of what we're talking about, the percentages in context. The, and regardless of where that percentage actually falls in terms of an income for a household in Lebanon or Lynn County, the rates at the property under LIHTC rules, this is the main funding source to the project, low-income housing tax credits that are awarded through HCS. this is the main funding source to the project, low-income housing tax credits that are awarded through O H C S. They, those rents, the highest rents of the property, the sixty percent units, they have to stay at least ten percent below market market rents for comparable units as determined by regular market studies, third-party market studies. The, and then on the kind of longevity of the affordability of the project, so speaking to the fact that it won't shift to market rate anytime soon, the fullest extent of the affordability periods connected with the federal funding that the project has received is sixty years. So it will be a very long time before there's any potential for the affordability of this project to go away. There's also in, one last thing on expected incomes, the the sixty percent units in tax credit properties kind of throughout Oregon, and I know this is me anecdotally saying this, but I can I can back this up if there's an interest in looking at the data. A number of those properties, particularly in rural areas, are filled with either, in this case, VASH voucher holders, so the veteran voucher through the VA, or Section eight vouchers through the Lynn Benton Housing Authority. So a number of those sixty percent units will still have are likely to still have households that are lower than sixty percent income.
Thank you, guys. Commissioners, you guys have any more questions for the applicant?
I got I got one more, one more. This is my last one. Thanks, Daniel. So with when you do, if you're doing four percent tax credits, I don't want to dive too deep to that. You got the fifteen percent, fifteen-year compliance period, fifteen-year reservation extended use agreement, which is thirty. So if you got sixty, you must have some lift funds and other state monies going to this, which is which is fantastic. But when you reduce the parking, and if you're saying the majority of that money is going to go towards, you know, the the community room and towards the residence, that's great. But you, are other apartment complexes or multifamily units, have they done the same thing? Because typically at O H C S, we look at appraisals and we look at land value. And in that appraisal, you look at what other multi-unit complexes are doing as well. So are other units outside of the Ben project or outside of what Ben's doing, are other units in Lynn County that you've seen reduce parking because of affordability? Have you have you seen that? Do you have other properties that, especially Casa, which I've worked with Casa before, are there other multifamily units reducing parking because of affordability?
Your mic's off, Dan.
Apologies. New world we're living in. I know we've done it on other projects in other rural communities. I don't know that, I don't know explicitly if it's been done in in Lebanon before. We are working with another group that was also funded in twenty nineteen through through O H C S. That one was home home funds. And I can I can see it's there is a general emphasis on projects that we work on to save money that can go towards resident benefit. Where, and the most obvious in a lot of projects is parking, it's large areas of unused asphalt that, you know, costly to build. And if we have anecdotal evidence or within, so we work typically as a consultant for the group who's going to end up owning it. We work with a lot of nonprofits and housing authorities. And if they know that the projects they usually build, a third, a fourth, a fifth of the the parking spaces of their property stay empty, that's usually a priority for them to put that money to better use.
Thanks, guys.
I would be interested in feedback from Ben. I don't know how long that's been in their code. And this probably isn't even a question for the applicants, but maybe going into our next next meeting next month, it would be interesting to see how long Ben's adopted that code and if there's been any pushback or problems that have arisen from that.
I'd be happy to to reach out to to the city of Bend and and get some anecdotal input from them. I I think it would also do some good to have the applicant put some work into it and provide further justification for the the reduction in parking based off of demand and based off of use and not based off of the design or or other community benefits so that you you can tie it to the appropriate finding, which is that there's appropriate parking on sites. As Samuel has mentioned, there's a section of the code that says that you are to provide sufficient parking on site to accommodate the demand and the use of the uses on site. And so the demand is based off of the correlation of the parking and the number of vehicles anticipated to service that site. And so it would be in the applicant's best interest to provide further studies that maybe are newer than than those identified to to assist in their justifications.
All right, are there any more questions for the applicants?
No, just basically more of a comment than anything else. Mr. Lutz, we really appreciate you wanting to build this project. I think it's a really good idea, myself personally. The only issue I have with it is the limited parking. It'd be nice to see if you could come up with, you know, a few more parking spaces possibly in your in your plan development. But I just wanted to say that, you know, we appreciate you wanting to do this.
All right. If there are no further questions or comments, I would move that we continue the hearing to May seventh, twenty twenty at six P M. And leave the record open to public comment until five P M. on May fifth.
I'll second that.
Who was that who seconded?
I did. Up here.
Okay, thanks, Tom. Thanks, Tom. Okay, we have a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed, sin a. All right, motion is approved. We will pick this back up on May seventh, six P M. And the public record portion, public comment portion will be open until five P M. on May fifth. And once again, thank you, guys, for joining with us here tonight. And this this is a strange, strange way to have a planning commission meeting, but it's it's working out okay. So I appreciate it.
And on our end, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right, next planning file is conditional use twenty dash zero one. I once again will defer to Mr. Kennedy if he wants to make any more stipulations on format or if we've already gone over that enough.
Everybody was on, it's same procedure is applied. If anybody has any questions, please don't be afraid to ask. Otherwise, you can ask for ex parte contact or conflicts of interest.
All right, thanks again. Has there been any ex parte contact or conflict of interest amongst the planning commission? All right, seeing none, then we'll move forward, open the hearing and turn it over to Kelly for the staff report.
Thank you, sir. Let me share my screen really quick. Okay, here we go. So good evening again. Before you tonight is a conditional use for an application for a fuel, storage and distribution facility. The subject property is generally located at the east end of Industrial Way and the north end of Williams Street in the city. It is a subject site that is a lease area, which is towards the north end of the Rick Franklin Railroad Yard area. And the applicant's Co-Energy Propane is proposing to utilize this lease area for a propane fuel, storage and distribution facility. Property is zoned industrial. Surrounding the lease area to the north is a largely vacant area that's utilized for storage associated with the rail yard, which is also zoned industrial. To the south itself is the rail yard operations and offices, also zoned industrial. To the east is vacant land that is zoned industrial. And to the west is a cemetery and further west is the Samaritan Hospital campus. And both of those are zoned public use. And again, the applicant is proposing to establish a propane storage distribution facility. The use would include a sixty thousand gallon above-ground storage tank for the onsite storage of liquid propane. The tank would generally be located in the northwest corner of the Leashold area and adjacent to the rail line. The tank would be installed on a concrete foundation. And there would be concrete bollards placed every four feet around the perimeter of the tank. Tank would have a rail tower installed to allow the propane tank to be refueled from the rail yard, from the rail line. In addition, the site would be accessed from William Street for the distribution trucks to be able to fill the smaller truck tanks from the onsite storage tank side with the second valve that's facing towards the interior of the property. The site is one point six nine acres, which provides sufficient area for the trucks to fully maneuver around and turn to be able to have proper vehicle circulation on and off the site. For fueling procedures, it would be through a closed system where a hose would connect to the storage tank from the truck or the rail tank. Once connected, the valve would be opened to fill each tank or to refuel the the tank onsite. And upon completion of the fueling, the valve would be closed and the hose lines would be disconnected. As identified on the proposed plans, there are safety protocols in place, including an emergency shutdown switch, a fire extinguisher rated for propane fires and crash protection bollards. In terms of staffing, the site would be considered unmanned as there are no staff on site. However, the train operators and the truck drivers would all be trained and certified for the appropriate fueling procedures for the operation of the the tank fueling. Additional, for additional safety considerations, federal regulations indicate that the tank must be stored at least seventy-five feet away from a building that is suitable for human occupation. As said, the storage tank would be located approximately eight hundred and forty-two feet from the closest building on Samaritan Hospital Campus to the west, approximately eight hundred and fifty feet to the office buildings in the rail yard to the south. All required state permits would be necessary to be obtained prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy. And the state fire marshal would be the permitting permitting agent for the storage of the hazardous materials. So with that, again, after the planning commission questions the staff, the applicant will be able to speak on the application. And the conclusion of the applicant's comments and any further questions is recommended that the hearing be continued to a date certain of May seventh and that the public record is kept open for comments until five P M. on May fifth. And for the public, again, the information of how to comment is on the screen was included in the public notification and is available online. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any other questions and I will stop the sharing of the screen currently.
Nobody has questions. Is that correct?
I do. I do. This facility is within eight hundred and forty-two feet of the hospital. Where are the prevailing winds drifting from this facility? Is it going towards the hospital or towards residences? I mean.
Good goodness, I I could honestly tell you I do not know. The applicant might be aware, and if not, I'm sure that we can find out.
Ron probably knows.
Prevailing wind is usually out of the south southwest, so that would be going away from the hospital. And it'd be out towards
The cemetery.
Yeah, that direction. And it's going to be kind of back behind the hospital. So unless you have a really strong east wind, you wouldn't, you wouldn't necessarily go that way. I think it would be more up to go probably towards Tennessee Road and up through that way, would be my guess.
It's official, Ron is smarter than me on this one.
Fortunately.
Thank you, Ron.
Yeah, you bet.
That's all I had.
All right, if no one has any questions for staff, then I'll invite the applicant to make his case. You're still muted. You're very, very unmuted.
Talk to the side of the screen, I think. There's a, there's a place on the, Brian, Brian, there's a place on the, it should be on the side of, the right-hand side of your screen. You should be able to find a place. I think you're probably, your audio is off somewhere.
There we go.
Ah, you're on your phone.
I think I saw his phone on mute.
There we go. Nope.
Nope, we lost you again. Still don't hear you.
Is this phone on mute?
There we go. Try again. No.
Andy, you got any ideas?
Yeah, Brian, I believe you need to unmute yourself from your machine, from your computer. I think you were originally muted on the phone and I think you're now muted on the, there you go, how do I talk in?
Can you hear me now?
There we go.
Oh, okay. Follow-up for the technical difficulties there. Yeah, so thank you for for everybody meeting under these unprecedented times. You know, I I appreciate you guys taking the opportunity to to hear about this conditional use permit. Doesn't look like there's a lot of questions. You know, from this perspective, a little bit of history of Co-Energy Propane, you know, we've been serving the community since two thousand and one. We're actually We're actually owned by the citizens of the local community, so our ownership is made up of Central Electric Co-op, Power Co-op based out of Redmond, Oregon, and Consumer Powers out of Palomont, and Pioneer Connect, a broadband co-op. We take safety and our ability to serve the community extremely serious, and we're looking at this facility for the, for the primary purpose of it allows us to expand what our propane capacity is for the community, and it also allows us to more efficiently deliver propane, which should lower costs for businesses and residents in the tune of about 20 to 30 cents per gallon, once we get this, once we get this facility in place.
I, I saw you have additional facilities like this, I think Redmond and Corvallis. What, how does this one compare in size to those two?
Thank you for the question. So in Redmond, we have a 60,000 gallon storage today, and in Corvallis, we have a 30,000 gallon storage. So the intent and the purpose for this would be to displace our current Corvallis storage, you know, expanding the size, then also allowing for rail access, which is our primary motivation and driver for this location. Currently, we run a transport truck either from our Redmond location or out of Vancouver, Washington, to bring supply into the local Mid Valley communities.
Thank you. Seeing done. In that case, I move that we continue the hearing date to May 7th at 6:00 PM. Leave the public record open to receive public comment until 5:00 PM on May 5th.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Todd. All right. We have a second for the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
All right. The motion carries. Public hearing will continue May 7th at 6:00 PM. Public record will remain open for comment until 5:00 PM on May 5th. Once again, thank you, Mr. Adams, for joining us, and we'll see you in a month, or not a month, a week.
Sounds good. Thank you, everybody, again.
Now that the public hearings are concluded, I just want to remind the public, there are multiple opportunities to provide comment. This will be displayed on the screen. I believe Andy will be able to do that for us, and it'll also be available on the city's website as well. And before we adjourn tonight's meeting, I just want to turn it back to Kelly. Is there anything else we need to go over before we adjourn?
No, not that I know of. Thank you all so much for, for putting up with this interesting experiment. We might be doing this for a while, and so just please be patient with it. And if you have any questions, feel free to contact with me, and we'll see you next week.
All right. Thank you, Kelly, and thank you, everyone else. We'll see you next week. This meeting is adjourned.